Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome. We're going to begin with a public hearing, so just want to remind everybody that we do have a regularly scheduled council meeting at seven o'clock this evening. However, we do have five public hearings that we need to take place before we start the public hearing. So, public hearings first, council meeting starts right after the public hearing. So, there may be some folks in the audience here for the public hearing. So, we do have five of them, and so we're going to get started. The first public hearing is going to be on Charter Resolution Number 296 concerning amending charter sections pertaining to council meeting, location, and time. This is a resolution by the Mayor and City Council of Havertine Grace, Maryland, adopted pursuant to the authority of the Maryland Constitution, Article 11E, the Local Government Article, the Annotated Code of Maryland, and Havertine Grace City Charter Sections 19 to amend City Charter Sections 28 and 31 generally pertaining to the location and time of meetings of the Mayor and City Council. Anyone here this evening to speak on Charter Resolution 296? Yes, ma'am? Yes, please. Good evening and welcome. May we please have your name and address for the record?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am Barbara Moore, 734 Tidings Road, but I am here tonight serving as proxy for Joe Kockendorfer, 819 Tidings Road, who was unable to be here.
Yes, ma'am.
He's provided me with his written comments regarding this charter resolution.
Okay.
Okay? I am here to speak against this proposed charter amendment. Official legislative meetings of the council are serious business. It is the business of a corporation of some fourteen thousand stockholders and residents. It is not something for the entertainment of the public. The argument for being able to move the meeting at will seems to be to spread the meetings around town and get certain members of the public to see and hear the affected, the elected officials in person rather than having them come to the seat of government. If so, I think that reflects poorly on a segment of our citizenry who may not be willing to put in the effort to find out what's going on with the city. As you know, it has never been easier to take advantage of the many sources of information provided by the city on its website, by attending council meetings, coming to City Hall, contacting elected officials and city staff, paying attention to the various boards and commissions, and just getting generally involved. I don't believe it's the city's responsibility to put on a road show. It takes some work and effort to be an informed citizen. This building was designed for public meetings. People know where it is, and it has good audiovisual equipment, comfortable seating, sufficient public restrooms, plenty of convenient parking, accessibility to department files, good HVAC, handicapped accessibility, and the proximity of the police department, giving a feeling of security in the case of trouble. City Hall is a neutral location, not encumbered by any special interest group. Hence, there should be no feeling of intimidation. It belongs to the public. Already in the charter, in Section 18D, is a provision that allows a council meeting to be moved or the time changed in case of emergency, as the mayor did a few months ago when heavy weather was forecast. I have no objection for the mayor and council moving non-legislative meetings around, but I want the official business of the city to be done here. I trust that the official minutes of this hearing will reflect my opposition to this proposed charter amendment.
Thank you very much. And please convey our regards to your father. Who else is here to speak on Charter Resolution 296? Sir? Good evening, sir. Welcome.
Good morning, or afternoon, evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Jim Miller. I live at 320 Lewis Street, right in the heart of the historic district. My comment here is, this could be a good idea if the alternate meeting location has adequate facilities and seating such as the Star Center or the Opera House. In the past, for some reason, meetings were held at different locations, and one meeting I attended was at the Maritime Museum. There was no real seating there, there was not enough room, and people that attended the meeting had to sit in front of or behind or around the displays from the museum, which didn't lead to a good location for a meeting, and there was no audiovisual equipment available to record the meeting for the future. That's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Who would like to speak on Charter Resolution 296? Any comments from the council? Okay, without any further comments from the council or to public, I now close public hearing on 296. Time is 7:07. Next public hearing is going to be on Charter Resolution 297 concerning amending charter sections pertaining to public ways, sidewalks, and water and sewers. This is a charter amendment resolution by the Mayor and City Council of Havertine Grace, Maryland, adopted pursuant to the authority of the Maryland Constitution, Article 11E, the Local Government Article, the Annotated Code of Maryland, and Havertine Grace City Charter Sections 19 to amend Charter Sections 65, 66, 67, and 68 generally pertaining to public ways, sidewalks, and water and sewer. Who from the audience, or from the public today is here to speak on 297? Sir? Welcome back, Mr. Miller.
Thank you. My name is James Miller. I live down on Lewis Street, close to the hospital that's not going to be here in a while. Reading this proposed change, it looks like it's all budgetary stuff, but I have one comment that in the section it says that the state highway controls the right-of-way of the state roads. So, with this article, does it mean that their city has no authority to allow graffiti on what used to be the crosswalks? Because the crosswalks are defined as having a certain size and dimension and color scheme, and painting books or music or other stuff negates the crosswalk. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Who else wishes to speak on Charter Resolution 297? Any comments from the council? Without any further comments from public or to council, I now declare the public hearing on Charter Resolution 297 to be closed. It is 7:09. Our next public hearing is on Ordinance 1122 concerning amending Sections 97 Historic Preservation pertaining to historic designation and other amendments. An ordinance by the Mayor and City Council of Havertine Grace, Maryland, adopted pursuant to the authority of Article 11E of the Maryland Constitution, the Local Government Article, the Annotated Code of Maryland, and Sections 33 and 34 of the Havertine Grace City Charter to amend City Code Section 97 Historic Preservation. Who in the audience wishes to speak on this amendment, or ordinance, sorry? Yes, ma'am? Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, y'all. Carolyn Zinner, 111 Tim Tam Court, Havertine Grace. I'm really excited about this ordinance because I think what it's doing now is elevating the importance of our historic, the historic nature of the city a little bit higher, and I think it's an excellent idea to do this, and I'm thankful for the Planning Commission and Mr. Booker, who is the liaison with the Historic Preservation Commission, and I'm sure they're quite pleased with this improvement. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zinner. Who else in the audience wishes to speak on 1123? Sir? Welcome back to the podium, Mr. Miller.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jimmy Miller. Live at the corner of Lewis Street in Strawberry Lane, but my house isn't on the corner. Reading this amendment, it talks about the city having a historic landmark list that is published. It should be put on the city website because we have the technology today that any citizen could go on the city's website and read all about it, look at the pictures if there's any, instead of having to come here to City Hall and make an appointment to come and view the stuff. So, that's my comment for today on that one.
Thank you very much. Who else would like to speak on Ordinance 1122? Any comments from council? With no further comments, I now close public hearing on Ordinance 1122. The time is now 7:12. We will go on to the next public hearing on Ordinance 1123 concerning approving budget amendment 2024-02 to establish the annual maintenance program for the city's living shoreline. This is an ordinance by the Mayor and City Council of Havertine Grace, by the authority of Article 11E of Maryland Constitution, the Local Government Article, the Annotated Code of Maryland, and Sections 37 of the Havertine Grace City Charter for the purpose of amending the city budget for fiscal year 2024 to establish the annual maintenance program for the city's living shoreline. Who in the audience this evening is here to speak on Ordinance Number 1123? Sir?
I've been busy today. Good evening, everybody, again. Still Jim Miller down that way in Havertine Grace. I think this amendment is important and much needed, and I've heard comments from several people because I'm kind of a busybody and people come and talk to me. If a private citizen owned some of that property and the code enforcement guy was doing his job, that citizen would be receiving some fines and stuff for the condition of the property. And although it might have been a good idea with this living shoreline, it should have been designed so that it was very low maintenance and not something that's going to cost us $140,000 a year to maintain. That's all my question is.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Anybody else here to speak on 1123? Yes, ma'am. Welcome back, Ms. Zinner.
Carolyn Zinner. Well, I agree with some of Mr. Miller's comments. I would like to say that it was clear in the detail regarding the ordinance that possibly this would not be the ongoing cost every year, and I think as we become more experienced with what it takes to maintain that shoreline, there will be opportunities to reduce the cost to citizens in the city while enjoying the benefits and the beauty of that shoreline.
Thank you. Who else is here to speak on 1123? Any comments from the council? Without any further comments, I now close public hearing on Ordinance 1123. The time is 7:14. We're going to move on to public hearing on Ordinance 1124 concerning approving budget amendment 2024-03 to automate the meter vault on Route 40. This is an ordinance by the Mayor and City Council of Havertine Grace by the authority of Article 11E of the Maryland Constitution, the Local Government Article, the Annotated Code of Maryland, and Sections 37 of the Havertine Grace City Charter for the purpose of amending the city budget for fiscal year 2024 to automate the meter vault on Route 40. Who in the audience this evening is here to speak on 1124? All right. What color's your house?
I'm winging this one here.
On the corner?
Modifying the vault to put remote controls in there is a great idea. Protects the city employees from having to go down in the vault and twist a large valve to open or close it, and anything the city can do to modernize the infrastructure is the way to go. And I'll tell you a little story. I used to work at Aberdeen Proving Ground. Aberdeen Proving Ground got their water from Deer Creek, and they had a guy that sat up at Deer Creek, and when they needed water, he got up from his desk and he pushed a button and he turned the pump on, and when the water plant got enough water, they'd call him and he'd turn the pump off. So, when that guy retired, everybody that worked in the water plant said, "I'm putting in for that job." Well, then the government said, "We're putting a remote control in up there, so we don't have anybody at the thing, so they push a button when they need water and then it goes." And then they did away with the water plant because they sold it to the town of Aberdeen to provide water in the sewer or water to the Aberdeen Proving Ground. So, wave of the future.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. You're five for five. Anybody else here to talk on Ordinance 1124? Any comments from the council? Okay, without any further comments on the public hearing, I now call, public hearing on 1124 to be closed. The time is 7:17. Okay. Now, we'll roll into our council meeting. Everybody ready? All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The time is now 7:17. The date is October 2nd, 2023. I now call to order a meeting of the Havertine Grace City Council and the mayor. I will call the roll. Council President Ringside.
Here.
Councilmember Robertson.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Boyer.
Here.
Councilmember Shinagis.
Here.
And Councilmember Booker.
Here.
All councilmembers are accounted for and present. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance and opening prayer.
I pledge allegiance
To the flag
of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. If I could kindly ask everybody to remain standing, it gives me a great pleasure, as always, to call up Reverend Gene Proud of the Proud Evangelistic Association. Welcome, sir. Thanks for being back.
Thank you for having me. It's always a pleasure to be with you. Let's pray. Father, you see the people who've been elected to guide this city. They want to do their very best. I want them to do better than that. I want them to do your very best. So, give them your guidance, your wisdom, your knowledge, and your peace so that we can live peaceable, peaceable, and productive lives. In the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Reverend Proud, thank you very much. Please be seated.
Go to item number five, approval of the minutes from the last council meeting, September 18th, 2023. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Booker, second by Councilmember Shinagis. Questions or comments?
Mayor, I'd be abstaining from this vote. I was very sick on that Monday. Thank you.
Understand. Thank you. Councilmember Boyer will be abstaining. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye. All opposed, say nay. Sorry. City council meeting minutes are approved 5:01. We're going to go to item six, comments from citizens. Just a reminder, this is the moment of the meeting that if you are here to speak on a item that is on this evening's agenda, now's the time to do so. If you're also here to speak on any other matter of city business that's not on the agenda, now's the time to do so as well. So, normally what I do is if anyone filled out a form ahead of time, I will call on those citizens first, and when there's no more forms, I will open up the floor to anybody who wishes to speak. And I have a form. Ms. Jolene Forrester. Good evening and welcome, Ms. Forrester. May we please have your name and address for the record?
Jolene Baldwin Forrester, 137 North Washington Street.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, and citizens. I'm a local shop owner that can trace my family roots in Havertine Grace back to 1810. My family's history is intricately woven with the Susquehanna River spanning three generations that proudly operated Baldwin's Boat Rental on Water Street. Some of my fondest memories revolve around the family wharf and day trips to charming small towns on the Chesapeake Bay. These are the same memories that I hope can be experienced by boaters and their children to our town. I'm here to advocate for the construction of a pier in downtown Havertine Grace. Boaters need a municipal dock to tie up their boats temporarily. They might use a transient pier for a few hours depending on their plans. These docks are strategically located in downtown shopping areas, making it easy for boaters to access the city's attractions, shops, restaurants, and explore the city on foot. A critical component is the environmental evaluation of this location based on the infrastructure, depth, draw, and type of pier that would accommodate various boat types. I'm optimistic that the city can craft a plan to support water access downtown. If not suitable on Green Street, perhaps Pennington Avenue at the foot of the proposed civic spine. While some may argue that a transient pier would not make a significant impact, I believe otherwise, each family that visits our town has the potential to inject cash into our local shops and restaurants. This spending isn't a one-time boost. It can spark future visits by land, creating a cycle of economic growth. It can spark future visits by land, creating a cycle of economic growth and community development. I see the pier as a promising starting point to welcome boaters and lay the foundation for what I hope will be a future grants to expand access cultivating a vibrant community. The pier isn't just an investment in infrastructure, it's an investment in the heart of downtown Havertory Grace. If a transient pier is determined to not be workable, perhaps some type of recreational boating experience with an adjacent park could be considered for water enthusiasts. Thank you for your time and consideration. Together, we can embrace our rich waterfront heritage and improve water access for local boaters and for first-time visitors to Havertory Grace. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Forrester. Okay, I see only pre-filled out speaker forms I have left, so I am now opening the floor. Please raise your hand to be recognized if you wish to speak. Yes, ma'am. Welcome back.
Thank you. Carolyn Zinner, 111 Tim Tam Court. My house is pale yellow with some brown trim, just in case anybody wanted to know. I didn't know if Jim shared his information with you when you asked him what color his house was. Never mind. Anyway, I'm here to talk about the ordinance for the pier, use of the pier at Hutchins Park for the Martha Lewis. So I want to thank everyone on the council for considering this request and also for the diligence that went into writing the ordinance. It's going to benefit the Martha Lewis and the Conservancy a great deal to have that opportunity to use the pier and to get really our foot back on the ground in terms of raising funds. I did send Mr. Gamatoria today an outline from Terri Dizell about what she sees as the syllabus for the second graders in terms of what they can do on the boat and also education, et cetera. So I think that's a good start and also they can do that from the boat without actually taking them out on the water because we do not have our certificate of inspection. So I'd like to bring that up too, is that for us, the COI is certificate of inspection. For you all, it's certificate of insurance. So we have been in touch with our insurance company to increase our liability insurance from $1 million to $3 million. And we did that last week. We haven't heard back in terms of what the price would be and I can't imagine that they can't accommodate it as long as we pay them. So that's what I'm counting on. So we will be looking to hold fundraisers and things like that, but we do have some, not liabilities, but we have some promises made last year during our last fundraiser. And I've been adamant about that we have to fulfill those obligations before we have another fundraiser. So I'm hoping we can do that in short order so that we can start raising funds to support ourselves in the near future. So again, I want to thank you and I appreciate your consideration in this.
Thank you very much, Ms. Zinner. Okay. Who else would like to be recognized to speak? Yes, sir. Good evening, Ms. Miller.
Good evening, everyone. Jim Miller, 320 Lewis Street. I'm not talking about anything on the agenda. One item I'm bringing up is kind of a safety issue. At the, what's known as the five-point intersection, there's a no-right-turn sign that's about the size of this piece of paper on Washington Street facing north, and there's a no-left-turn sign on St. John Street facing north to keep you from making a U-turn. Those signs should both be replaced with the proper signage. It should be a, you know, the no-U-turn prohibited sign of the right size that's supposed to be on the road. I've almost got hit in the last month, like four times, when I pull up to the stop sign where people were making the U-turn onto Washington Street and they can't make the turn and they almost, you know, come into the side of my pickup truck. Another thing, downtown parking. Keep reading on Facebook the complaints about the parking going away downtown once the new streetscape project has started. So right now, if the city would enforce Chapter 190 vehicles and traffic, some of these issues would go away. One is 190-55 deals with parking within lines or markers. There's all parking spaces down there and you go down there and the cars are parked in the middle of two spots. 190-65, parking commercial vehicles in a residential zone. Downtown is residential business. It's sometimes referred to as a parking exempt district, but the parking exemption is for the houses down there not being required to have the two off-street parking spaces. Parking non-motorized vehicles on the city streets. One time I had my boat parked across in front of my house hooked to a battery charger and somebody decided that 3:00 in the morning would be a good time to give me a parking ticket for parking the wrong way on the street. But you go down on St. John Street and there's a couple trailers parked on the street taking up a lot of parking spaces. And 190-71, parking on the city parking lots. If you go down there to the lot on Lodge Lane, there's a white truck that's been sitting there for a couple of years that probably doesn't run, but it's been parked in that same spot ever since. And, you know, that's taking up parking spaces that are valuable to our visitors, not some business owner that doesn't do work. So, and also the city has the option of hiring a parking enforcement person. They don't have to be a police officer, but they kind of work hand-in-hand with the police department. And I know somebody would work on commission to do that work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Anybody else in the audience wishes to speak? Good evening. Welcome. May I please have your name for the record?
Rusty Geis. I just noticed the American flag is the 1515. Is that the official flag of Havertory Grace?
Well, years ago, when we celebrated our bicentennial of the War of 1812, we put 15-star flags around the city. So we left that one up here just for our connection to the War of 1812.
Okay. I approve.
Thank you. And we feel that, we feel that connection, you know.
Well, I'm considering that official, so Martha Lewis will have one as well.
Well, thank you. That's the Fort McHenry flag, as you all know. Anyone else wish to speak? Any comments from the council? Without any further comments from the public or from the council, we will move on to item seven, which is appointments. We do have an appointment this evening to the Tourism Advisory Board, and I will hand that off to Councilmember Jones.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. I move that we appoint Joanne Healy to the Tourism Advisory Board.
Motion by Councilmember Jones, second by Councilmember Robertson. This is for the appointment of Ms. Joanne Healy to the Tourism Advisory Board. Questions or comments on the appointment? All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Ms. Healy is appointed to the Tourism Advisory Board, 6-0 in the affirmative. Excellent. Okay. We are going to go ahead and go to item number eight, which is oath of office. We have two oath of offices that need to be administered tonight. The first one will be Mrs. Healy, the Tourism Advisory Board, and the second one is going to be to Officer Abigail Schaefer, who is going to be a new police officer for the city of Havertory Grace, who just completed her police academy training. So, Ms. Healy, could I ask you to come down and join us, please? Would you like to join us?
Hello.
How you doing? You staying busy, huh?
Yeah.
Stand here and, first of all, thank you for being willing to, he's on, okay. Thank you, Ms. Healy, for being willing to give up your time again to serve the city on the commission. I know you're very busy with other entities around the town, so like I say, we're going to take the oath of office here. I asked Councilmember Jones to join me, who's the liaison to the Tourism Advisory Board. So what I'm going to ask Ms. Healy is if you please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I'm going to say the word aye. When I say the word aye, please repeat the word aye, but also say your name. Aye?
Aye, Joanne Healy.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will fulfill.
That I will fulfill.
The requirement.
The requirement.
Of the office I'm about to assume.
Of the office I'm about to assume.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution.
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof.
And the laws thereof.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Without fear of favor or prejudice.
Without fear or favor of prejudice.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
As a member of.
As a member of.
The Tourism Advisory Board.
The Tourism Advisory Board.
For city of.
For city of.
Avra.
Havertory Grace. Havertory Grace.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my abilities.
Got you there.
As a sincere. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If you could step over here, I have something for you. First of all, this is yours, the key. And this one right here stays with the city's records. Hey, chief, ready for the introduction?
Absolutely. Officer Schaefer, come on down. This is Officer Abigail Schaefer. She is our newest officer. She graduated on September 21 from the Hartford County Sheriff's Office Training Academy. And she was the only one from an outside agency that was there. So she was the lone renegade in the class. But she held her own. She definitely held her own. This is actually a perfect example of the community recruiting. This started actually, the first time I met Abigail was actually by the telephone or by texting. One of our downtown business folks called me one day, it was like in November, and said, "Hey, chief, I know you're always recruiting. I think I have a very good candidate for you." So she told me a little bit about Abigail, and I think you were going to apply to Elkton Police Department. Well, we won't, we won't hold that against you. So I quickly made sure that she had my phone number and we kept texting back and forth. And then finally, she came in and saw us and took the test and did everything that we asked her to do. So she has changed amazingly. Not that it was bad before, but before, before the academy to now your graduation and you look phenomenal. You really, really do. So, and but most of all, we really do thank you for being a part of our police department and our family. You have no idea how much we appreciate that. Very good. Very good.
I'll use the mic. Sorry. So thanks, chief, a couple words. And Officer Schaefer, I'm going to give you a moment to speak in a second. But we met briefly on the national night out and we had some good conversations and everything that chief said, it's true. The chief is very picky. You know, she, we're very selective with the men and women that we ask to come into our community to, you know, to help us with our public safety. And so I knew you passed the chief's test and Captain Alton's test and, and so we're happy to have you here. Congratulations on, you know, going through the police academy. So this past week, what have you been doing since September 21st? Have you been off or you've been working here in Havertory Grace?
Actually, I had my first.
Okay. Had your first night last night.
Training last week. She graduated, but she had more training.
All right. Was it quiet last night?
Yeah.
Too bad. Okay. All right. So anyway, so again, I couldn't be any happier to have you onboard. And I know like, you know, it's, it's getting, just like anything, whether it's firefighters, people that ride ambulances, school teachers, and especially police officers. You know, public service isn't what it used to be with the people lined up to join the ranks. And like I say, you know, men and women who decide to do this for a career, I mean, you really have to commend them because, you know, we, we need folks like you now more than ever. I mean that. So before I hand you the microphone, I'll toss it off to Councilmember Boyer, who's the chair of the Public Safety Committee. You'll be seeing her a lot.
I just want to say congratulations and thank you. You're going to step in line to a woman who is just a role model in general, and I look forward to you being the role model for the next generation coming up. I just want to remind you that our kids, we want them to run to you for safety.
Well said. Okay, so Officer Shaffer, I'm gonna administer the oath. Probably stand right back here, we're good. I'm gonna say the word "I," and when I say the word "I," please repeat the word "I," but also say your name as well. Please raise your right hand. "I"?
I, Abigail Shaffer.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will fulfill.
That I will fulfill.
The requirement.
The requirement.
Of the office I'm about to assume.
Of the office I'm about to assume.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
Support the Constitution.
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof.
And laws thereof.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Without fear of favor or prejudice.
Without fear of favor, favor or prejudice.
Discharged to duties.
Discharged to duties.
As a police officer.
As a police officer.
For the city of Havertagh Grace.
For the city of Havertagh Grace.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Officer Boyer. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Shaffer, if you would mind, your little daughter would like a badge on her, and just to let you know, you're to be here this evening, and as you said, you're at 20 minutes, you're at 20 minutes?
Yep.
Yes, so thank you very much. She was very happy with that.
Okay, we're gonna move on with the program this evening. Item number nine, recognitions. This evening, we have no recognitions on the agenda. Item 10, proclamations. This evening, we have no proclamations. Which takes us to item 11, presentations. And we have a presentation we've been looking forward to this evening. A local author, this is Lindsay Pope, and artist John Keaton, and this is going to be a book reading, from the book titled The ABCs of HDG: Fun and Facts in Havertagh Grace, Maryland. And good evening, we're happy to have you here.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for having me, I'm very excited to be here. So my name is Lindsay Pope, I'm a local author. Do I need to give my address?
You're good.
I do live here in Havertagh Grace. And my friend John Keaton is also a Havertagh Grace resident. Oh, thank you. Is it, um, Ford?
Ford.
Ford, okay, perfect. And he was the author for this book, so we were very happy to keep everything local. In fact, even the book printing for our hardcover books was also done here in Maryland, so we tried our hardest to keep everything as local as possible. Before I get started, I just wanted to let everyone know that this book was made possible through a creativity grant from the Maryland State Arts Council. I also wanted to say special thank you to the mayor and also to our fabulous Director of Tourism, Lori, missing her tonight, but both of them were so helpful with bringing this book to life, and I really appreciate that. All right, so with that, we'll get started. A is for art, murals, statues, and more. B is for bald eagles nesting high above our shore. C is for Concord Point Lighthouse, a great place to explore. D is for decoys that we carve and display indoors. E is for Ernest Burke, a memorable athlete. F is for First Fridays, food and fun right on the street. G is for ghost tours at a fun and spooky pace. H is for the Havertagh Grace Colored School Museum, a most impactful place. I is for Independence Day with fireworks galore. J is for John O'Neill, who kept us safe during the war. K is for the Joe K Trail, let's go explore outside. L is for General Lafayette, who named our city with some pride. M is for museums where artifacts surround. N is for our neighbors, we have the best around. Not that I'm biased. O is for the Opera House, so many shows to see. P is for our promenade parks, relaxing places to be. Q is for the Queen of our Mardi Gras Parade. R is for Ride the Tide, so many memories are made. S is for the Star Center and State Theater, great spots to see a show. T is for trains, sit by the water and watch them go. U is for uniforms worn by those who keep our city a safe place. I don't know if anyone here looks familiar to you guys, but there should be some familiar faces. V is for our visitor's center, come learn about Havertagh Grace, and this is also a gentleman who is a volunteer in our visitor's center. W is for water, the river and the bay. X is for excellent books and an indoor spot to play. Y is for yummy treats that always taste so great. Z is for our zip code, 21078. So that's the book. Just so you all know, there is a lovely foreword by our mayor as well in the front, and in the back, we made sure that we listed off, because throughout the book, we actually planted a few fun Easter eggs of some local people, local organizations. So for just an example, in the fireworks Independence Day scene that you saw with the parade, there's a boy wearing a Frog tee shirt, and that's to represent the Christopher Xavier Boyd Foundation, which is local here to Havertagh Grace. Also, the neighbor scene that you saw, the letter N, that's for Isaacson Noble Homes, that's actually that family that owns that Airbnb, because of all the work that they're doing, just to promote, you know, inclusion. So in the back of the book, we have a QR code that takes you right to the Havertagh Grace website, because we know we didn't give everything, but we tried our best to really just represent what the city's about, and we're really hoping that this book will help other people learn just more about it. Each page also has a fun fact about Havertagh Grace, so you can see here, we still have the letter Z up on the screen, but every single letter actually has a fact along with it. So I didn't read that here today, just for time's sake, but hopefully you're interested in reading the book more and you can flip through. But the ultimate goal is, is really just to help promote the city, so it was a real joy to write this, and John and I had a lot of fun bringing it to life, so we really hope that you love it as much as we do.
Ms. Pope, I think it's excellent. I remember coming to my office a while back and just kind of, just kind of brainstorming and spitballing on, on some of the harder letters to come up with, and we had a little fun, just kind of, so I commend you on what you came up with and the rhyming of the letters, and the artwork is phenomenal.
Thank you.
And so, thank you, sir. I mean, the artwork is great, and absolutely, absolutely, it's tremendous, absolutely. Well done. I mean, it's, it's great, it's fantastic. I, I just think you've captured everything that our city stands for, and I appreciate taking the time to present to us and, and letting the, the viewing audience, not just here, but at home, watching, to see that. And so, so once again, where can people get their hands on this book?
Yeah, absolutely. I always say, if you order directly through me on social media, that way I can personally sign it, so anybody that has a child that they'd like to give as a gift, you know, I can write a child's name in the book, make it out to that person. That's always ideal, so I'm on Facebook and Instagram under Lindsay Pope Rights. It is also available online, it is on Amazon, and it is on Barnes and Noble as well, dot com.
Excellent. Thank you. Council, any comments? Casey?
I just wanna say, I think this would make an excellent gift for somebody who is expecting a child, and I look forward to buying a couple of them, just to have them in reserve, just when you, when you need that a gift.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Thank you. Oh, and I should mention that it is for sale also at Joseph's Department Store, so they've been immensely supportive of me. They carry all of my books in stock, and I know several other local authors as well, so they're fantastic. And I'm certainly hoping that it may be other businesses pick this up. This is, again, another goal, is to help raise revenue for local businesses, and it's also going to hopefully be a fundraiser for local nonprofits as well. I'm gonna be offering a program so that they can use this as a fundraising tool if they choose to do so.
Councilmember Shenegas?
I just wanna say, it's wonderful to see you grow as an author.
Thank you.
I saw you at the Maritime Museum, reading your Stella's Star.
Stella's Dream.
Stella's Dream. She's a starfish.
Yep.
And I met John Keaton most recently in the past as well, and for, to see you two collaborate on this beautiful book, it is gorgeous, and it is amazing just to see our community come together and to bring something that is so beautiful for us all to celebrate. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I will be at Autumn Fest as well, shameless plug, but Havertagh Grace event, but there will be a storytime at 11:30, but I'll be there all day, and I know we'll have one of John's, because every scene that you see in the book is hand painted. He hand painted every single scene, and we're still friends, so that says a lot. But yeah, we have the canvases that he has as well, so we'll have one on display there during that event.
Any other comments? Thank you so much, we appreciate you being here.
100% with the book as well.
Oh, absolutely. I'll come back and receive it, absolutely.
Yes, it just got accepted today.
This will be, it'll be awesome book.
Yeah. Can I have a doo-doo? Yeah. Thank you. Are we enjoying it inside your house? Of course.
One college man.
Of course, yeah, thank you.
It's cool. I like both of the pictures. All right, where are we here? Okay, all right, we're just cruising along here. Item number 12, we have some resolutions coming up. We have a couple here, we're gonna do a charter resolution. Charter Resolution 295, Councilmember Robertson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, fellow councilmembers, I move to introduce on second reading Charter Resolution Number 295 concerning amending sections pertaining to the Department of Economic Development. A resolution by the Mayor and City Council of Havertagh Grace, Maryland, adopted pursuant to the authority of the Maryland Constitution, Article 11E, the Local Government Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland and the Havertagh Grace City Charter, Sections 19 to amend City Charter Sections 18C, 83 and 84, generally pertaining to the Department of Economic Development, retitling the Department of Economic Development and retitling position of the Director of Economic Development and amending the duties of the Director of Economic Development. This is, as I said, Number 295. And Council, do I have a motion to adopt?
Second. Motion by the Council President, seconded by Councilmember Robertson. Questions or comments? Councilmember Robertson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a reminder for the viewing audience at home, this is essentially adding the title of Tourism under the Director of Economic Development's full title, so it'll be the economic, the Director of Economic Development and Tourism. Oh, sorry, I can't get that out. And then a whole litany of organizations and entities that that person would be responsible or liaison with. It's all essentially the functions that are happening in that department. This calendar resolution just seeks to clarify and, or codify exactly what that is.
Thank you, Councilmember Robertson. Any other questions or comments? Okay, Council, this is gonna be a roll call vote for the second reading of Charter Resolution 295. Councilmember Boaker?
Yes.
Council President Ring Sager?
Yes.
Councilmember Robertson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Shenegas?
Yes.
By a roll call vote of six zero and affirmative, Charter Resolution 295 concerning amending sections pertaining to the Department of Economic Development is adopted and approved by Council on second reading. Item B is gonna be a calendar resolution concerning establishing legislative priorities. So this is gonna go to the Council President.
Mr. Mayor, Council citizens, I move to introduce calendar resolution concerning establishing legislative priorities and positions for the 2024 session.
Council, I have a motion by the Council President, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Shenegas. This is a motion to introduce a calendar resolution. Questions or comments on the introduction? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion to introduce counter resolution, passes six zero and affirmative, and this will be known as Calendar Resolution 2023-15, 2023-15. A resolution by the Mayor and City Council of Havertagh Grace, Maryland, pursuant to the Local Government Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland and Sections 33 and 34 of the City Charter for establishing legislative priorities and positions for the 2024 session of the Maryland General Assembly and authorizing the mayor and designated to speak and advocate for the priorities and positions established. Council, do I have a motion to adopt Counter Resolution 2023-15?
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Jones, and it's seconded by the Council President. Questions or comments? Council President?
This is a pretty basic resolution. It, it allows us to establish our priorities for the upcoming General Assembly legisla- our legislative priorities for what we want to get out of Annapolis and what we don't want to see. So I'm not gonna belabor the point and, and go over everything that's in there, it's all available online, what our current legislative priorities are, but if you have any questions, feel free to call.
Thank you, Council President. Any other questions or comments? Council, we're gonna do a roll call vote on Calendar Resolution 2023-15. Councilmember Shenegas?
Yes.
Councilmember Boaker?
Yes.
Council President?
Yes.
Councilmember Robertson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer?
Yes.
By a roll call vote of six zero and affirmative, Calendar Resolution 2023-15 is adopted and approved by Council. Okay, we're gonna move to item 13, which will be ordinances. This evening, we have a handful of ordinances to be read. The first one is going to be the second reading of 1118. Councilmember Boyer?
Mayor, I move to introduce Ordinance 1118 concerning amending City Code 120, nuisance pertaining to graffiti for second reading.
Council, I have a motion by Councilmember Boyer, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by the Council President. This is a motion to introduce ordinance 1118 on second reading. Questions or comments on the introduction? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion to introduce ordinance 1118 on second reading, carries six zero and affirmative. An ordinance by the Mayor and City Council of Havertagh Grace, Maryland, adopted pursuant to the authority of Article 11E of the Maryland Constitution, the Local Government Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland and Sections 33 and 34 of the Havertagh Grace City Charter to amend City Code Sections 120 titled "Nuisance." Council, do I have a motion to adopt ordinance 1118 on second reading?
It's a moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Boyer, seconded by Councilmember Shenegas. Questions or comments? Councilmember Boyer?
The purpose of this ordinance is to add to our nuisance laws, the issue of graffiti. We have seen in the past year, year and a half, an increase in graffiti around the city of Havertagh Grace, and we want to make sure that we have, we provide the mayor and administration as much, as many tools as they need in order to make sure that we get it.
Councilmember Booker?
Yes.
Council President Ring Sager?
Yes.
Councilmember Robertson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Shenegas?
Yes.
By a roll call vote of six zero and the affirmative, Charter Resolution 295 concerning amending sections pertaining to the Department of Economic Development is adopted and approved by Counsel on second reading. Item B is going to be a calendar resolution concerning establishing legislative priorities. So this is going to go to the Counsel President.
Mr. Mayor, Counsel, citizens, I move to introduce calendar resolution concerning establishing legislative priorities and positions for the 2024 session.
Counsel, I have a motion by the Council President. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Shenegas. This is a motion to introduce a calendar resolution. Questions or comments on the introduction? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion introduce counter resolution passes six zero and affirmative. And this will be known as Calendar Resolution 2023-15, 2023-15. A resolution by the Mayor and City Council of Havertide Grace, Maryland pursuant to the Local Government Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland and Sections 33 and 34 of the City Charter for establishing legislative priorities and positions for the 2024 session of the Maryland General Assembly and authorizing the Mayor and designated to speak and advocate for the priorities and positions established. Counsel, do I have a motion to adopt Counter Resolution 2023-15?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Jones and it's seconded by the Council President. Questions or comments? Council President?
This is a pretty basic resolution. It allows us to establish our priorities for the upcoming General Assembly legisla-- our legislative priorities for what we want to get out of Annapolis and what we don't want to see. So I'm not going to belabor the point and go over everything that's in there. It's all available online, what our current legislative priorities are. But if you have any questions, feel free to call.
Thank you, Council President. Any other questions or comments? Counsel, we're going to do a roll call vote on Calendar Resolution 2023-15. Councilmember Shenegas?
Yes.
Councilmember Booker?
Yes.
Council President?
Yes.
Councilmember Robertson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer?
Yes.
By a roll call vote of six zero and affirmative, Calendar Resolution 2023-15 is adopted and approved by Counsel. Okay, we're going to move to item 13, which will be ordinances. This evening, we have a handful of ordinances to be read. The first one is going to be the second reading of 1118. Councilmember Boyer?
Mayor, I move to introduce Ordinance 1118 concerning amending City Code 120, nuisance pertaining to graffiti for second reading.
Counsel, I have a motion by Councilmember Boyer. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by the Council President. This is a motion introduce ordinance 1118 on second reading. Questions or comments on the introduction? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion introduce ordinance 1118 on second reading carries six zero and affirmative. An ordinance by the Mayor and City Council of Havertide Grace, Maryland, adopted pursuant to the authority of Article 11E of the Maryland Constitution, the Local Government Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland and Sections 33 and 34 of the Havertide Grace City Charter to amend City Code Sections 120 titled nuisance. Counsel, do I have a motion to adopt ordinance 1118 on second reading?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Boyer, seconded by Councilmember Shenegas. Questions or comments? Councilmember Boyer?
The purpose of this ordinance is to add to our nuisance laws the issue of graffiti. We have seen in the past year, year and a half, an increase in graffiti around the city of Havertide Grace, and we want to make sure that we have, we provide the mayor and administration as much, as many tools as they need in order to make sure that we get it cleaned up and keep it looking nice around town. The issue of graffiti is a very significant issue. When graffiti is around, it makes people feel unsafe. It also obviously is, destroys people's property. And that's a major problem, whether it be city property or individuals' property. And if anybody has any questions, just let me know.
Thank you, Councilmember Boyer. Any questions or comments? Yeah, real quick, I just wanted to comment. And I appreciate Councilmember Boyer's thoughts. I'm just piggyback on what she said. Over to, every year or so, maybe every other year, we get a rash of graffiti in the city. This past summer was exceptionally bad. Everyday signs, benches, trashcans in our parks. There was graffiti and as much as we love art in the city of Havertide Grace, there was definitely a place for art. And Councilmember Boyer is right. I mean, when you, when you come to a city and you see graffiti on our benches and trashcans, it looks like a city that doesn't care. And that's not true, we care. In fact, we care so much that we spent, you know, thousands of man-hours throughout the summer on DPW employees scrubbing really hard to get the graffiti off. And so we believe we're one of the few cities in Maryland actually has a graffiti ordinance. The problem is, it's very hard to catch these people. You know, it's, you know, they're not stupid. They don't sit there and spray paint in front of police officers. It's, they wait for the opportunity and they, and they do their thing. So we're hoping that this ordinance will send a message to would-be amateur artists, you know, that if you want to do some graffiti, this isn't really the place you want to do it at. So again, I appreciate the Counsel working on this ordinance. Hopefully this will help curb it a little bit. We'll see what happens. So anyway, that's the whole reason behind this is, you know, you can't catch these people. So maybe the specter of some kind of penalty will get them to think twice. Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'm going to do a roll call vote on ordinance 1118.
Mayor, if I might, one more thing.
I'm sorry.
I believe there's also a point of view that it's been expressed by other members of Counsel. I just want to make sure that it also gets on the public record that as much as possible, we would like to make sure that the penalty, as much as possible, would include community service when implemented. So if that could play on the public record as part of the legislative intent, that would be important to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Boyer. Roll call vote, ordinance 1118. Councilmember Boyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Shenegas?
Yes.
Councilmember Booker?
Yes.
Council President Ring Sager?
Yes.
Councilmember Robertson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones? By a roll call vote of six zero and the affirmative, City Council Ordinance 1118 is adopted and approved on second reading. Thank you very much, Counsel. Item B, ordinance 1121. Council President?
Second, sir. Actually, I'm going to defer to the head of the Marine Commission for that. If you read the ordinance, it's actually supposed to be her introducing it, not me.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, Council President. Hello. And I move to introduce ordinance 1121 concerning authorizing a lease agreement with Chesapeake Heritage Conservancy for the Skipjack Martha Lewis in the second reading.
Counsel, I have a motion by Councilmember Shenegas. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Booker. This is a motion introduce ordinance 1121 on second reading. Questions or comments on the introduction? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion to introduce ordinance 1121 for second reading carries six zero and affirmative. This is an ordinance by the Mayor and City Council of Havertide Grace, Maryland, adopted pursuant to the authority of Article 11E of the Maryland Constitution, the Local Government Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland and Sections 33, 34 and 36 of the Havertide Grace City Charter to approve a dock lease between the city and the Chesapeake Heritage Conservancy Incorporated for the use of Hutchins Park Pier. Counsel, I have a motion to adopt ordinance 1121 on second reading?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by the Council President and seconded by Councilmember Shenegas. Questions or comments? Councilmember Shenegas?
The purpose of this ordinance is to agree about the lease between the mayor and city council and the Conservancy with the Skipjack Martha Lewis will be in town for two seasons, 2023 and 2024. And we will, they will be provided a slip and all the electricities at no cost. And it will bring history and an opportunity for our community to learn about voting experiences and the history of the Martha Lewis.
Thank you, Councilmember Shenegas.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I have a question.
Councilmember Boyer?
So on line 27, it says, as consideration for the waiver of the dock fee, the leasing agrees to provide an educational cruise opportunity free of charge for up to 12 Havertide Grace residents per year on six different dates on a first come, first served basis. Do we have any more information about that?
Director of Administration?
Yeah, so part of the, the give of the slip for the two years was we want to get as many people, without hindering their ability to make money, to get some of our citizens out onto the river. So they have, will have to provide us with those six dates and then it's on a first come, first served basis. So we want to have some guarantee that, sort of like we did with the Decoy Museum, I think, or the Maritime Museum a while back, is that they had to give a certain day a week of free pass for citizens.
So this is above and beyond any, like, school tours, et cetera?
Correct. This is, this is over and beyond any of their programs.
Okay.
This is separate for our citizens.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
So in the, I was not at the last meeting, but I did see the presentation. And under section, I guess line 63 on page four, where it speaks to the Coast Guard vessel certification, that seemed to be problematic just with the timing of how the vessel gets to Havertide Grace and then gets inspected sort of after the fact. So I think if we removed G D, we would be okay to move forward. And then we would require, I think the Coast Guard is going to require the certification regardless before they can use the vessel. Is that correct? Yep. So I don't think there's any harm in removing D so we can get the vessel to Havertide Grace. Once they get to Havertide Grace, then the Coast Guard will come down and do their sea trials and do their inspection there. If that's okay with Counsel.
So remove Section D?
Yes, sir.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Councilmember Boyer, seconded by the Council President to remove Section D. Any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Section D's been removed, six zero and affirmative. Any other questions or comments? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote on ordinance 1121 for second reading. Councilmember Jones? Councilmember Boyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Shenegas?
Yes.
Councilmember Booker?
Yes.
Council, Council President?
Yes.
And Councilmember Robertson?
Aye, aye, Captain.
Okay, five affirmatives and one aye, aye. Ordinance Number 1121 concerning lease for the Skipjack is approved. Six zero and affirmative. Okay, Item C. We have another second reading ordinance that's going to be ordinance 1123. And I'm going to hand that off to Councilmember Robertson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, fellow council members, I move to introduce on second reading ordinance Number 1123.
Counsel, I have a motion by Councilmember Robertson. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilmember Jones. This is a motion to introduce ordinance 1123 on second reading. Questions or comments on the introduction? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, all opposed say nay. Motion to introduce ordinance 1123 is approved, six zero and affirmative. This is an ordinance by the Mayor and City Council of Havertide Grace, by the authority of Article 11E, the Maryland Constitution, the Local Government Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland and Section 37 of the Havertide Grace City Charter for the purpose of amending the city budget for fiscal year 2024 to establish the annual maintenance program for the city's living shoreline. Counsel, do I have a motion to adopt 1123 on second reading?
So moved.
I have a motion by the Council President and seconded by Councilmember Booker. Questions or comments? Councilmember Robertson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you may have heard earlier in the Citizen Comments section, this is a requirement for the city to maintain the living shoreline. This is a rather new thing for the city to take on. And with that, there have been some adjustments that have had to be made and some learning curves that had to be presented. And one such is when the proposals came back, there was an increase in the total amount that will be needed for this year. And to not geek too much into the budget terms of things, a long story short, is the end of year fund balance shifted a little bit. But the beginning year fund balance kind of increased a little bit due to recruitment of real property taxes, which should offset that increased need of 22K. So my fellow council members, I move to amend ordinance 1123 for the amount to change from 120,000 total to 142,000 total. And you should have this amendment in your packet for the evening.
Okay. Counsel, I have a motion by Councilmember Robertson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Sorry, was that Councilmember Shenegas? Okay. Questions or comments on Councilmember Robertson's amendment? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Councilmember Robertson's amendment approves six zero and affirmative. Councilmember Robertson, anything else?
No, sir.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments for the roll call? Okay. Roll call on ordinance 1123. Councilmember Robertson?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Shenegas?
Yes.
Councilmember Booker?
Yes.
Council President?
Yes.
By roll call of six zero and affirmative, City Ordinance 1123 is adopted and approved by Counsel on second reading, as amended. Okay, we're going to go to Item D, which will be a second reading of ordinance 1124. Councilmember Robertson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, fellow council members, I move to introduce on second reading ordinance 1124.
Counsel, I have a motion by Councilmember Robertson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Boyer. Questions or comments on the introduction of 1124? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion to introduce ordinance 1124 carries six zero and affirmative. This is an ordinance by the Mayor and City Council of Havertide Grace, by the authority of Article 11E of the Maryland Constitution, the Local Government Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland and Section 37 of the Havertide Grace City Charter for the purpose of amending the city budget for fiscal year 2024 to automate the meter vault on Route 40. Counsel, do I have a motion to adopt 1124 on second reading?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Boyer, seconded by Councilmember Robertson. Questions or comments? Okay, roll call vote. Oh, sorry, Councilmember Robertson.
Well, I was just gonna, I mean, this also was brought up in the public hearing and it was Jim Miller approved, so we got a good stamp.
So it must be good. Anything else? Okay. Roll call vote on 1124. We're going to start off with the Council President.
Yes.
Councilmember Robertson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Shenegas?
Yes.
Councilmember Booker?
Yes.
Roll call vote of six zero and affirmative, City Council, or City, City Council Ordinance 1124 concerning proven budget amendment 2024-3 is approved and adopted by Counsel. We're going to go to Item E, and this is going to be an amendment or ordinance for a first reading. And I'm going to hand it off to Councilmember Shenegas.
Thank you, Mayor, Counsel. I move to introduce ordinance concerning repealing and replacing Chapter 31-2, amendments to the International Property Maintenance Code in the first reading.
Counsel, I have a motion by Councilmember Shenegas. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Jones. This is a motion introduce an ordinance on first reading concerning international building code, or property maintenance code, sorry. Questions or comments on the introduction? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion introduce an ordinance concerning International Property Maintenance Code carries six zero and affirmative. This is an ordinance by the Mayor and City Council of Havertide Grace, Maryland, adopted pursuant to the authority of Article 11E of the Maryland Constitution, the Local Government Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland and Sections 33 and 34 of the Havertide Grace City Charter to repeal and replace Chapter 31-2, amendments to the International Property Maintenance Code. Counsel, this will be ordinance 1125. This will be ordinance 1125, 1125. Do I have a motion to adopt 1125 on first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Shenegas. Questions or comments? Councilmember Boyer?
So the way that I understand this, and just so that everybody else following along at home, the reason why it is written the way it is is because we are adopting the International Property Maintenance Code. And then there are certain sections that don't necessarily either apply or that we need to change the language on. And in total, all of the lines where we're changing things is in line to what we have had in the past.
That's correct. So, so we originally adopted, we currently are using the 2018 code. When you went from 2018 to 2021, they have a bunch of changes. Usually those are all legal changes for things that have happened over the past three-year period in other municipalities, other, other governments. And so they try to make all those fixes. Generally, as far as any of the technical stuff, whether air conditioning, heating, any of that sort of thing, none of those are even changed. So, but sometimes they just move stuff around. So something that was in Section 305, for whatever reason, it got bumped to 307. So they just reorganized it. So we have to kind of go through and find all the amendments that we made for 2018, and we just remake those in 2021. We adopt the new, the new code with the new legal changes in that first section. And then we add a couple of things. So we've had issues with mold. We thought air conditioning would be important to have during the summer months here if it was already in the building to begin with. So there's just some, some tweaks we made based on our experience over the past few years.
Can you explain which ones were the ones that were changed?
Yeah, it was, it was, it was an issue with mold. Let me just look really quick. It was an issue with mold and there was an addition to, it was air conditioning, if it was already in the residence for those summer months, that it has to be, it has to be repaired. I believe those were the two things that had changed.
So mold is on page eight, line 330. Am I doing that? Yeah, 330.
Sorry, I just got to get to the, the ordinance section. Let me just skim through really quick, sorry. Let me just skim through really quick, sorry. We added a section in, let me just find it here. So Section CCM 304, Temporary Storage Containers. So if we, if you remember back to when we were putting in the fee schedule, we had a definition in there about temporary storage containers. It was sort of a weird area to kind of regulate temporary storage containers. So we added it into the Property Maintenance Code. So this just makes it more clear that semi-truck trailers are not considered, are not, are maybe considered deemed temporary storage, but it's something we have to consider situation by situation, and that they're only allowed a permit for one year at a time. There is a section in here, yeah, so Section II on 330 is the mold section. Section, line 338 KK, screening shall be added as follows. All permanent dumpsters must be fully screened from public view. So we're going to require dumpsters to be screened, and...
Where's the air conditioning?
I'm checking it.
Substitute?
No, it's not there. Let me see. RR includes air conditioners, cooling equipment from the months of June through September, line 367. And then, one of the issues that had came up in their code, for whatever reasons, it looked like there was no appeal process in a lot of jurisdictions. So maybe they were getting citations for violating the Property Maintenance Code, but we have a Board of Appeals, so we've removed that whole section. So those were the tweaks. Everything else was just really stuff that we've already had, that we're putting back in, and if any of the sections changed, it was just because of a reorganization on their part from 2018 to 2021.
So can you talk just a little bit about the enforcement of all this?
Yeah, so we have a code enforcement official. He makes his rounds daily. So if he sees something that's in violation, whether it's anything from grass or weeds or peeling paint on a house, he'll usually, you know, knock on the door, talk to people. If he doesn't get a response, we have door tags. If that doesn't work, we send certified letters. So the next step after a bunch of different points of contact, if things don't move forward, we will write citations as part of the citation process. If the citation isn't paid and if the situation isn't remedied, then we would go to court and seek an abatement order. And with that abatement order, then hopefully we can get the problem taken care of. So usually, in the time I've been here, even with open permits, citations are rare. We have a really good, Earl Swager has a really good working relationship with our residents, just for the time that he's been here. Usually, if he asks to have something done, people are pretty responsive about it. So that's generally what happens. The other piece of it, if there's a, we've had a situation where there's renters, and under our rental code, they can call us for an inspection, and we would call the landlord to meet with us, and then we would do a tour of the house. If there's anything that's an emergency issue, we'd require that to be fixed right away. If there's a tenant leaving and we're inspecting the house, we wouldn't allow, in some situations, the place to be re-rented until some things were fixed. And otherwise, we give a certain period of time for the landlord to fix, not emergency issues, and then we would go back and re-inspect to make sure those were done.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Any other questions or comments? Mr. Sir?
And if I could add to Mr. Boursier, I think it would help you, Councilmember Boyer. So the issues that become, where the abatements are not occurring. So we meet every other Wednesday, the city attorney, myself, and the planning team along with Earl, and then we come up with a strategy to start moving those processes forward, which includes going to court, for court actions on those. The other thing that may be helpful is if Mr. Boursier, between now and the second read, or the public hearing, if you could just highlight the new sections for the general public and for the council.
Yeah, I have that now. I don't know if it was included with part of this. There was a, there was a marked-up section from 28 to 2021, and then this was the clean version, so I'll just, I'll reshare that with everybody.
So it's sort of like a Cliff Notes version?
No, so we have the 20, we have what's adopted now, and then I have that marked up, so it's bold and bracketed or underlined, so you can see what was added and what sections were moved where. But then I reorganized it and just repealed and replaced it because we have it in chronological order of the section, so their sections are 100, 200, 300. So the marked-up section, because of their reorganization, had everything all over the place. But I provided at some point the underlined and deleted version, the added and deleted version, and then I had this one, the clean version. So I'll just reshare the one so everybody can see what was added and taken out and what was moved where.
Of the International Property Code?
Well, our amendments.
Or just our...
Yeah, and actually, I can provide what was moved from 2018 to 2021. They do have a table, it's just a matter of going back and forth, but I can also provide that.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? The roll call vote on city ordinance 1125. Councilmember Booker?
Yes.
Council President?
Yes.
Councilmember Robertson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Shenegas?
Yes.
Roll call vote of six zero and affirmative. City Council ordinance 1125 is adopted on first reading. Council President, any objections to holding the public hearing on 1125 at 7:00? The next council meeting on October 16?
October 16.
Sounds good. Public hearing on 1125 will be at 7:00 on Monday, October 16, here at City Hall.
You said 1125, I was thinking November 25.
Okay, item F, ordinance concerning a deed, and that's going to go to the Council President.
Mr. Mayor, council citizens, I move to introduce ordinance concerning accepting a deed for 105 Wilson Street for first reading.
Second.
Council have a motion by the Council President, seconded by Councilmember Boyer. This is a motion to introduce an ordinance on first reading. Questions or comments on the introduction? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion to introduce ordinance carries six zero and affirmative. This is going to be known as ordinance 1126, ordinance 1126. An ordinance of the Mayor and City Council of Havering Grace adopted pursuant to the authority of Article 11 E of the Maryland Constitution, the Local Government Article, the Annotated Code of Maryland, and Sections 33, 34, and 73 of the Havering Grace City Charter for the purpose of accepting a deed for 105 Wilson Street for a public purpose. Council do have a motion to adopt 1126 on first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by the Council President, seconded by Councilmember Boyer. Questions or comments? Council President?
So 105 Wilson, we're hoping to finally fix Lily Run. And, I mean, God willing, and the creek don't rise, we'll have it fixed, but it's one of the properties, what this does is allows the mayor to accept the deed for that property, and there is another one neighboring it that we hope to obtain as well, so we can put in some retention ponds to stop the overflow, and we'll get some credits from the state that we can sell to the county and possibly use that to fund the property. Just got to figure out the plan for that, but this was voted on in closed session, was announced at a previous meeting, and I think it's a wonderful idea. I really hope that this time it works.
Absolutely. Thank you, Council President. Any other questions or comments? Okay, roll call vote on ordinance 1126 on first reading. Councilmember Shenegas?
Yes.
Councilmember Booker?
Yes.
Council President?
Yes.
Councilmember Robertson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer? Roll call vote of six zero and the affirmative. City Council ordinance 1126 is approved and adopted on first reading, and Council President, can we also have the public hearing on October 16?
By all means.
Okay, public hearing on ordinance 1126 will be at the next city council meeting, October 16, 2023, right after the public hearing on ordinance 1125. Okay. We will go to item 14, old business. This evening, we have no old business. We will go to new business, and we have a few events. We have four events that need to be approved, and we're going to hand these off to the Director of Administration, Mr. Gametoya.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. The first of the four events is Harmerstown Art Center Graw Alley Ribbon Cutting Celebration. And this is organized by the Harmerstown Art Center. Pam Spelker will be the onsite person. They are a 501(c)(3). This will be a ribbon cutting for the new Graw Alley, which will occur at 115 Market Street, between Congress and Bourbon Street. The anticipated attendance is going to be somewhere around 1,500. There are, this is a street closure between Bourbon and Congress for the event. There will be food service, and there will be alcohol. There'll be a food truck at each end of the block. Within your packet is the date and time schedule of the event, which will occur on Friday night and then Saturday. In between those times, the streets will be open, so it won't be closed throughout the, you know, the whole day and a half period. Also, there is a map depicting the area and the costing sheets at the back. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Gametoya. Council have a motion to approve the Harmerstown Art Center ribbon, Harmerstown Art Center Graw Alley ribbon cutting celebration.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by the Council President, seconded by Councilmember Shenegas. Questions or comments? All those in favor, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm just excited to see this. This has been a long time coming, and a lot of incredible effort has been made, and a lot of creativity, and I think it's going to bring great things to the city in ways that we haven't even dreamt of yet. So thank you very much to those who have worked tirelessly to make this happen.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Booker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, this has been a long time coming, I'm really looking forward to it. So I did review the packet, nothing really glares at you, so from what I understand, it doesn't look like that alcohol will be sold. Alcohol will be there, but not sold?
That's correct.
Alcohol be present or sold?
Alcohol will be in the confines of the area.
Okay.
And I'm not sure if, I believe it's giveaway, but I'm not going to speak for that.
It's just for a small toast.
Right.
Oh, got it. Thank you so much for the clarity.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Shenegas?
I just want to say thank you for your tireless efforts at taking the concept from the beginning, when it started as a campfire opportunity with Allen Fair and the Graw Alley Crew. And it's beautiful to see the board grow and develop, and for our community, as well as our state, get involved and help build this into what it has become. Looking forward to seeing all of the concrete turned into a beautiful show, and looking forward to seeing the statues and the inside of the building. Looking forward to also seeing it be a place to house more artists, so that they have an opportunity to create in an indoor space, as the murals are outdoor, but it also, you know, will bring the community in. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Harmerstown Art Center Graw Alley Ribbon Cutting Celebration for October 20, 2023. It's approved six zero and affirmative. Mr. Gametoya?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The second event council is the Hally Jolly First Friday Parade and Hally Jolly Fridays. This is sponsored by the City of Havering Grace, the Department of Economic Development and Tourism, and Lori Orziewicz is the onsite person. This is both festival and parade. The dates are December 1, 8, and 15. Attached to your packet is the breakdown of the December 1st, Hally Jolly First Friday with the parade, and then the 8th and the 15th will be Hally Jolly Fridays. The map is attached, as well as the costing document. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Gametoya. Council have a motion to approve Hally Jolly First Friday.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Boyer, seconded by Councilmember Booker. Questions or comments? Yes.
I just want to confirm that Santa Claus has been invited?
Santa Claus, we have an inside track with Santa Claus, by the way. So yes, he does know about it.
Okay, great.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Hally Jolly First Friday Parade and Hally Jolly First Fridays for December 1st is approved six zero and affirmative. Mr. Gametoya?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And the next event council is the Candlelight Tour, sponsored by the Lockhouse Museum. On-site contact person will be Julie Runkie. They are a 501(c)(3). The setup is December 9th at noon. The event is the same day from 4 until 8, and then a breakdown at 9. The attached map depicts the area in which the Candlelight Tour will occur. The tour group is asking for no parking signs requested from Union Avenue, on Union Avenue from Green to Commerce Street. So I just want to make just one point. In the past, when we shut the Union Avenue down, we used to do it from Legion Square all the way to Tidings Park. And the last couple of years, we started at Green Street and went to Tidings Park. So I'm not sure if the council would like to maybe inquire to the Lockhouse if they would like to do the entirety of Union Avenue, there's other blocks, or we're just going to continue with Green down. I know it came up a couple of times during the last few years when we switched back, so it's the council's pleasure. I can relay any information back to the Lockhouse, and then if they have the ability to do the other, then we'll certainly put the no parking signs out. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Gametoya. I have a motion to approve the Lockhouse Candlelight Tour.
So moved.
Second.
Council President, seconded by Councilmember Jones. Questions? Councilmember Boyer?
Yes, are the orange dots the locations for this year?
Yes.
And are there any that are, are they only going to be downtown this year?
No, so there, I think in the application, it speaks that there are a few that are off the normal beaten path. They give the, somewhere in there, there's a notation that... I think there's some intention that there's something sort of outside that, outside the normal trolley run and walking area that may come on board as far as their participation in the tour. And I don't know if they've locked up all the sites yet or not.
Okay, thank you.
Council President?
Mr. Mayor, is there any plan for anybody to put the luminaries out and pick them up?
This year?
This year? Would it be us again?
None that I'm aware of.
It's usually us.
I know who it is, but I don't know if they've reached out to you all or not.
I don't know.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll follow up with Ms. Runkie.
Well, if you need us, we're there for you.
Okay, thanks, Councilmember. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Booker?
Yeah, just don't set the bags on fire this year, okay?
That was my son.
Thank you. Lockhouse Candlelight Tour, December 9th, 2023. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Candlelight Tour is approved. Mr. Gametoya?
Last but not least, the Relay for Life of Hartford County. It's American Cancer Society, Allison Epp will be the onsite contact. Allison Epp will be the onsite contact person. Uh, this is, uh, will be set up on May the eighteenth. Setup begins at noon. The event is two PM to ten PM, breakdown at eleven PM. There is no rain date. This is a rain or shine event. About two hundred people are anticipated. Um, no, uh, food service will be, uh, provided, uh, no alcohol. The, um, in the packet, it has the, the layout of Concord Point, similar to years in the past, and also the accasting sheet. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Gambitoya. Uh, Relay for Life, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Motion by Councilmember Boyer, seconded by Councilmember Shenegas. Questions or comments? Councilmember Boyer?
I just wanna say, this is probably one of the more moving events, um, that we have. The solemnness of it, especially, um, when they turn out all the lights and everybody walks, it's, it's just a, a wonderful event. I encourage everybody to mark it on your calendar and please come.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Relay for Life of Hartford County, May eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four, is approved, six, zero, and affirmative. That'll do it for, uh, special events. Thank you, Mr. Gambitoya. And we're gonna go to Director's Reports, and we'll go to the Director of Administration.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'd just like to, um, I'll be brief. Uh, thank, uh, Dr. Ritchie, Chris Ritchie, who, uh, filled in for me for the last two weeks when I was on vacation. Um, and I'd also like to, again, thank Council for their indulgence with, uh, the number of leg- pieces of legislation that are coming through, and still more to come. We do, uh, we have been working diligently with, uh, bringing the, the charter up to speed, um, uh, getting it a little more modernized, and we will also have a couple annexations that'll be coming down the pike, probably next meeting or within the, the next two or three meetings. And these are just single-location annexations to sort of tighten up the, um, um, the boundary line. So, with that, I appreciate the Counselors, Council's hard work. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gambitoya. We're gonna go to, uh, Director of Planning. Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. Um, I have the August, no, I'm sorry, the September numbers for, uh, permits. We had eleven new construction permits applied for, um, fifteen renovation or addition permits, includes decks and porches, and fifteen miscellaneous permits. So, we're still staying pretty busy, just as a, um, to have something to compare it to. Um, we have a breakdown by first quarter, uh, from this fiscal year to the past two fiscal years. Um, we had sixty-three new construction, just new construction permits, applied for in the first quarter of this fiscal year. Uh, compare that to last year, first fis- uh, first quarter was only three new construction permits, and in the year before that, thirty-six. So, um, we're nearly doubled, uh, from two years ago, and we're, we're blowing, uh, last year out of the water. So, we stay very busy, um, and, and it's not just in one area. I mean, there's, uh, sixteen of those, sixty-three were in single-family houses, there's twenty townhouse developments, or twenty townhouse permits, uh, and twenty-seven condo units. So, we're getting a little bit of everything, staying busy, um, despite the, uh, despite the, the lending situation and, and high interest rates, um, and a, uh, uh, expensive, inflated housing market. Um, we continue to build, things can, continue to move. So, that's it for me, unless anybody has any questions.
Council, any questions? Tim? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And, uh, good evening, Director of Econo- Econo- Development and Tourism.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and citizens at home. I have a very brief report tonight. Um, last week, September twenty-eighth, we published the eighth edition of the Haverty Grace Business Beat Newsletter, and I just wanted to specifically recognize, uh, some bi- businesses in Haverty Grace that are either new or expanded. Um, one is Anita's Treasures. That is a new business. It is located at three twenty-three Saint John Street. We have Valentine's Antique Store, uh, moved from Seneca to one hundred Saint John Street. Zodiac Records moved from, uh, Saint John Street to one forty-one North Washington Street. Found Vintage Company moved to two fourteen Washington Street. Chessy's Closet opened over the weekend. She is located at four sixty-two A Franklin Street. And Lisa Scott Funeral Home on five fifty-two Lewis Lane is expanding. Um, she purchased the property next door to her current location, and she will be opening that as a business center. So, thank you to my colleague to my right for helping her through the planning commission and Board of Appeals process. Um, I wanted to spec- specifically, um, recognize those businesses tonight. Um, I always say that these businesses can locate anywhere in the United States. They have chosen the City of Haverty Grace, and we are happy to have them. Um, the only thing else, Mr. Mayor, is First Fridays is here again. It's this Friday, October sixth, from five PM to nine thirty in downtown Haverty Grace. And, um, if there are no questions for me, that concludes my report.
Council, any questions for Econo- Development? Thank you very much. Ms. Johnson? Good evening, Deputy Director of Finance?
Good evening, uh, Mayor, Councilmembers. I'm joining today because our esteemed, uh, Finance Director is on vacation, much needed. Uh, so I'm sure he's, uh, enjoying his time in North Carolina. Uh, just to give you a rundown in terms of the, uh, our funds, our major funds, uh, the general, uh, fund, uh, in terms of revenues, were up, uh, three hundred fifty-eight thousand. Uh, expenses were up, uh, three hun- six hundred thirty thousand. Uh, in terms of our beginning, uh, fund balance, uh, it was up a little bit, about eight thousand. Uh, so that affected our fund balance for, as of today, uh, was down three hundred sixty-three thousand dollars. Uh, our ending fund balance, uh, as, as of September twenty-ninth, was, uh, a little over ten point five million dollars. In, in terms of water and sewer, uh, we had revenues that were up, uh, one point one million. Uh, expenses were up a little over, uh, seven hundred seventy thousand. Uh, in terms of our beginning, uh, year balance, uh, it was up, uh, hundred sixty-four thousand due to some accruals. Uh, in terms of our ending balance, uh, as of today, uh, is, uh, was up, uh, five point eighty-seven thousand, ending at, uh, two point three million. Uh, lastly, our Marina Fund, um, revenues were, uh, up, uh, two hundred dollars. Uh, expenses, uh, thirty-one thousand. Uh, in terms of our, uh, beginning year balance, it was unchanged. Uh, the net effect of that in terms of our fund balance, uh, to date, was down thirty thousand, ending at, uh, fund balance of, uh, four hundred and ninety-one thousand. So, that is all I have today, and if you have any questions, uh...
Any questions? We have any questions, but I thank you for coming here tonight, and thanks for joining us.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Director of Public Works? Good evening.
By the way, we're making great time. Okay? Thank you.
Compared to the last one. Good evening, EJ.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for the first reading of the deed, one oh five Wilson Street. I just wanna begin on, uh, we have a public meeting tomorrow, six PM. We're gonna go over the Lily Run Restoration Project. Uh, our presenters are gonna propose a habitat restoration and a flood mitigation plan. Uh, so please join us if you have any questions, comments, or concerns about Lily Run. Again, six PM tomorrow. We're looking forward to, uh, hearing your input here in council chambers. Uh, second, you mentioned Graw Alley opening. Um, if you went down there, you saw that new signature sidewalk portion. Um, it's a really beautiful touch to the downtown area on Market Street. Um, as mentioned, ribbon cutting ceremony October, October twentieth, and you could see some of the, uh, great murals by DPW employee Ezra Berger. Uh, to close, thanks to Susquehanna Host Company, uh, House Four. They hosted a great CPR and AD event for us. Um, really good session for DPW, and they gave us a good rate. And, uh, thanks for teaching us that CPR song to the Bee Gees and, uh, the Baby Shark song, which has been stuck in my head all weekend. So, thanks for that. That's all I have to report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, EJ. Appreciate it. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, I just wanted to remind everybody, October is, uh, Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And if anybody has been in the area of tr- about twenty-five, uh, twenty-five fifteen Churchville Road, that's in, where the Unitarian Fellowship Hall is, across from the Wawa by the Arena Club, that type of thing, you might have seen the, um, the silhouettes there. Um, if you ever get an opportunity to just pull in and, um, get out and read the different stories about the victims in the silhouettes, they are actually victims of domestic violence that were murdered from people who supposedly loved them and cared for them. So, we do really encourage people that if you do know somebody who is involved in a, um, domestic situation, um, both physically as well as psychologically, SARC, which is the Spas Abuse Resource Center, is amazing. We've got amazing SARC, um, folks here in our county. But, um, if you wanna contact them at any time, they have a hotline, um, three sixty-five, twenty-four hours a day. Uh, the phone number is four ten eight three six eighty-four thirty. That's four ten eight three six eighty-four thirty. And something that struck me, uh, when I was doing some, um, research, that about, throughout the entire country, on a daily basis, about those resource centers receive about twenty-one thousand calls for service for people who are in domestic violence situations, and that equates to about fifteen calls a minute. So, clearly, domestic violence is, is, it, it's an epidemic. So, but if you do know anybody that is involved in that type of a situation, refer them to us, refer them to SARC, give them the phone number, and we'll do everything that we can to help them out. And that would be it, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Chief. Appreciate it. Um, we'll go to, uh, business from the mayor. Couple of things real quick. Uh, as said earlier, the, this Friday is First Fridays. I guess we don't really need to announce that. I guess if you know it's the first Friday in the month, then you know it's it. But anyway, um, but also, uh, the, if you're looking for things to do, the next couple Saturdays, this Saturday is the, um, is the, uh, Upper Bay Pride Festival down at Concord Point Park. Don't ask me for the hours, 'cause I don't have it right in front of me, but just show up on Saturday, and there'll be something going on. What is it? Two to six. Thank you very much. Thank you. Also, the following Saturday is our annual Oktoberfest down at Concord Point Park as well. So, all these things can be, uh, scouted out on explorehavertigrace.com or the Haverty Grace, um, Tourism Facebook page. Hope to see the Oktoberfest or at the Upper Bay Pride Festival. Trolley stats for September, not bad. Over, uh, about thirty-three hundred, thirty-three hundred riders on the trolley. Keep in mind, several of those days were rained out. So, uh, thirty, three thousand three hundred riders, one thousand eight hundred thirty-five total miles, and knock on wood, zero incidents still. So, we commend our very, uh, professional drivers on the trolley, that they are able to multitask, that they can talk, chew gum, and, and pick up, and then drive at the same time, pick-up drivers. That's impressive. I couldn't do that. I have, I would, you need to drive or talk. I can't do... But anyway, it's, uh, but now, I gotta tell you, I, I'm just telling, I mean, if you're sitting at home, you ever been on the trolley, the thing that freaks me out the most is on the starboard side of the trolley, I guess the right side, if you're facing forward, is a, is a, um, metal-plated step, uh, step. It's not on the left side, it's on the right side. And that is the first thing I'm always worried about, people like, like not knowing it's there, like hitting a car tire or something like that, hitting a curb. And I gotta tell you, these, these drivers are, uh, they're, they're, they're really good. They're, I'm, I'm proud of them for not having a, any incidents. They really have their mind on what they're doing. So, again, thank you to the trolley drivers. And I'm also impressed because the turn signals on these trolleys are not self-canceling. It's like the first week, or first couple of months we had a trolley is like driving in Florida, you know, you're just behind these things with a, you know, turn signal on forever. But, anyway, but these, uh, drivers, they're, they're on the ball now. You get behind these trolleys, and there's no more turn signal on. So, anyway, I mean, to the viewing public at home, this might not seem like a big deal, but, um, you know, we, we, we really appreciate how professional our drivers are, and they're great, they're all great ambassadors. They do a great job. Very proud of the tide. And just briefly, um, you know, the City of Haverty Grace has a Cultural Exchange Commission that we established four years ago, uh, when a contingency of our citizens, uh, I know Councilmember Boger and Councilmember Boyer went over to Wales to a town called Mumbles, and, uh, we twinned with this beautiful town, with awesome people, and we established a Cultural Exchange Commission, which basically keeps the, uh, the twinning thing on- ongoing. Or should we ever twin with another city anywhere else in the world? Uh, the Cultural Exchange Commission serves multiple purposes. It's chaired by Ms. Debbie Stathis. She will be in, uh, at the next council meeting, I think, with photos and updates of the recent trip. But the second visit of Haverty Grace citizens, about a dozen of us went over, uh, last week. Uh, it was Tuesday, the eighteenth, to I think Saturday, um, twenty-second, something like that? Anyway, it was Tuesday to Saturday, and I was able to join them, uh, Thursday and Friday. My trip was abbreviated, but my son and I flew over, and we joined our friends from Mumbles. It was a great time. And, uh, the folks over there are, are just wonderful people. I can't wait for them to come back to, to Haverty Grace again. They're, again, if anybody ever gets over to Mumbles, you'll definitely know why they're our twin city. I mean, in, in more ways than one. It really is, uh, they have a lot, a lot in common. Prominades, lighthouses, uh, beautiful parks, beautiful, like, shopping districts, you know, always trying to find ways to, you know, do things for kids, like skateboard parks and things like that, or, you know, family infrastructure, just like we have. It's wonderful. It's like, it really, we have so much in common. Not kidding, I'm joking. Old, let's just say, old infrastructure. It's just, every city's dealing with those things. You know what I mean? So, it's, uh, talking to those folks over there, it's wonderful. And then, uh, my son and I rolled out on Saturday and spent a couple of days driving around the English countryside, checking out some ancestral properties, and, uh, we put almost eight hundred miles on a little teeny car in, in four and a half days. So, it was, it was a nice trip. But with that said, like I said, uh, Ms. Debbie Stathis, who's the Chair of the Cultural Exchange Commission, emailed me today and asked if she can have a spot on the agenda next week, or at the next council meeting, uh, to give an update on that wonderful trip. So, uh, you know, you don't have to wait, you know, I tell people all the time, you don't have to wait until we all go over there. If anybody ever ends up in the United Kingdom and goes to Wales, uh, there's a nice little town on the ocean, and all you have to do is, uh, uh, reach out to, uh, the Chair of the Cultural Exchange Commission, and I'm sure you'll be pleasantly surprised at people that would give you a warm welcome for, uh, a nice dinner or, or tour of the town. But what is cool, and my son thought this was so neat, you know, you know, you fly thirty-five hundred miles, and then you get to the airport, and then you drive five hours, you know, west. And the coolest part is when you're driving into town, and you see that sign, you know what I'm talking about, right? You see that sign that says, you know, "Welcome to Mumbles," and it says, "Twinning with Haverty Grace, Maryland." You see the big Haverty Grace logo, and it's right on the ocean, too. That's what's cool. So, I'm sure Debbie Stathis will have a picture of that. So, thank you very much. Um, we're gonna go to Council Comments, and, uh, oh, one other thing. Saturday night, ACDC cover band at the Star Center. Okay? So, if anybody likes ACDC, it's at the Star Center, great cover band coming in. Tickets can be purchased at, uh, starcenter.com or the Visitor Center, and, uh, I mean, who wants to watch an Orioles playoff game, right? When you could go see... When you could go see DC ACDC play. Orioles enter playoffs all the time. You just can't always see ACDC, right? Or maybe it's the other way around. Okay, everybody. We'll go to Council Comments. Uh, Councilmember Boger?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the citizens who are still with us and the citizens, uh, at home, appreciate your time and attendance. Um, so, Abdul, we're really gonna blow this away, 'cause I have so much stuff to talk about. So, uh, but, 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 uh, but first and foremost, I, I love to see new officers, uh, come, come up here, so congratulations to Officer Abigail Schaefer, uh, for joining the ranks of the Haverty Grace Police Force. I think that's a, an, an, an incredible addition to Haverty Grace. Uh, I also want, wanna, wanna personally thank, uh, our, our Director of Planning, Mr. Tim Bouchier, uh, for, for, for the most recent, uh, uh, gathering of, uh, citizens at the Star Center. Uh, sir, sir, you handled, you handled that quite well, and the way that that was broken out, and the way that the different comments were, were handled, and the different notes that were taken, uh, my, my hats off to you. Hope you got the pictures I sent you, uh, but, but that was, that was fantastic, and it really was educational to all the citizens who, who would, and I, there was council members here, uh, that, that, and as well, too, and it was real good to have those conversations. Uh, it was, it, it was good. It was, it was good. Also, good to see some of the Think Big construction that's going on. That's really, that's really motivational. I love to see those. The Susquehanna Wine and Seafood Festival was a pretty good attraction. You know, it just, it just goes to lend that, that we persevere, right? Havertown Grace don't care what the weather is, we're going to have a Susquehanna Wine and Seafood Festival. So, hats off to the, to the BEC team that put that together, and it was safe. DPW Police Force, excellent job as always, right? The Business Beat, my hat's off to Ms. Bridget Johnson, Director of Economic Development and Tourism. The business, I always turn to two different, or actually three, three sources. The Business Beat, Explore Havertown Grace, and of course, Adam Rebenzke. They know what's going on, so if you, if you need to know what the kind of schedule is, those are the three sources that I recommend that you go to. And I think I will close with thanking the Susquehanna Host Company, EMS, our first responders, and our police force for keeping us safe. Thank you. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Council Mayor Boger, and good evening, Council Member Jones.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. And good evening to everyone here, members in the audience and folks at home. I went to the Wine, Susquehanna Wine Festival, and I thought it was great, rain or shine. It was a great event. And so, I also wanted to say a big congratulations to BEC for another great event. This Saturday and Sunday, actually, yeah, the 7th and the 8th, there's a Fall Festival, and that's at the Stepping Stone Museum, so I just wanted to mention that. And then also, October, a lot of things are celebrated in October, and one of them is Down Syndrome Awareness Month. So, I just wanted to acknowledge that. I have an uncle who has Down Syndrome, and so, understanding what he goes through and what our family goes through, I think is, is really important for other people to know what that's like. And so, I just wanted to share that, that that is this month. And that's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Council Member Jones. Good evening, Council Mayor Boyer.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council and everyone sitting in the audience and at home, thank you all for being a part of tonight. I, I had a unique perspective at the Wine and Seafood Festival. I got to help out my friend Beth, because she was short of people, and she needed people to step up and volunteer. And I poured an incredible amount of wine, incredible amount of wine, and it was, I'm not much of a, of a drinker, so I got to sell a lot of wine, too, and it was kind of interesting. But what was the most incredible part was the greater majority of the people who were there, were not Havertown Gracians. They were people from all over the region, and I truly mean region. I mean, there were people that came from North Carolina and stayed in, at the Van Diver. I mean, it was absolutely incredible, and when, even though it was drizzling, I don't even know how to describe what it was. It was raining for a little bit, then it wasn't, and then there was misty, it was kind of, it was a yucky day. But everybody was happy to be there. And they were happy to be there because A, it was a well-run event, B, it's a put-together town, who knows what we're doing, and C, it's just beautiful out on, out by the lighthouse, even if it's raining, it's still beautiful there. And it was a very orderly group of people who just enjoyed each other and just had a wonderful time. And I'm so glad that we have events like that here in Havertown Grace, where we can bring other people in to see how wonderful and how great our town is, and everybody wanted to move here that I was talking to. I also attended the public input session about the hospital. I thought it was a really good opportunity to hear from a wide variety of people, and we had, had a bit of a variety of ages in the audience, too, and I thought that was really important, because the fact of the matter is, even though we'd like to think that we're young, we're, we're not the ones that are going to be inheriting the solutions that we're going to be coming up with in regards to the status of the hospital. It's going to be our kids, it's going to be the 20, the 20-sums, et cetera. They're the ones that are really going to have to deal with the decisions that are being made. So, I think it's very important to involve them as much as possible and pull them forward in getting their input and their perspective. And they have some pretty unique perspectives, but a lot of it, what I heard from the younger members of the audience were focused on safety, wanting to preserve their community, the community that their parents grew up in, the community that makes them feel comfortable, and they, they don't want to, this was resounding, they don't want to become Bel Air. That was something else that just was really strong said. That said, another comment coming from our work group, our group that walked around, they were very interested in, even the younger people, they wanted to have a way to make sure that those who are older within our community have a place to live where they can age in place. And if that's possible with the property in one way or another, or a piece of the property, or just something else that we try to attract to our town, trying to find a way to make it so that people can live their best lives in Havertown Grace as long as they can. I want to thank the Chief for comments in regards to SARC. Usually when people think of SARC, you know, they think of, of women and domestic violence, but that's not, that's not true, and I think that's something that we really need to start breaking away. And when you walk, when you drive by the, those silhouettes, you can see that it's not just women, and it's not just children. There are males, there are elderly. It, it really does impact all segments of our society, and doesn't even have an economic touch. It really is, perseveres throughout the society. And I agree with you, it is at epidemic proportions, and it's something that we need to make sure that people know that there's a safety net around them, and we're not afraid to talk about it. So, I really appreciate you bringing that up. But I also want to say, you know, our Officer Schaefer, she obviously came here because of your tutelage, but what other people might not know is, the Chief does an amazing job reaching out to younger people, especially younger women, who are interested in the, into the profession of being a police officer. And we're, we're very, very lucky to have her, because she has guided many people, and a couple of my daughter's friends, to help them make good, sound decisions. And the amount of time that you take just to talk with people, even people who are not pursuing law enforcement, that just have (inaudible), who have an interest in the topic of law. You do, your, your patience is wonderful. You're an inspiration to many, and I want to thank you. And can we do something, when we get young females swearing in, can we get maybe jackets that fit them?
Well, actually, when she was measured for it, it fit her.
Oh, really?
But she lost over 17 pounds in the academy. So, yes. So, there was not enough time to get that tail (laughter) hurt. It just wasn't. So, but she did. She, she lost some ser, and she wasn't big to start with.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we need a girl cut on the shirt and the jacket, so.
Well, it was, but it doesn't look like it now.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Council Mayor Boyer. Good evening, Council Mayor Shenegas.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, our wonderful esteemed administration, our citizens in the audience, and at home. It is wonderful to be here tonight. It is wonderful to look back at the weekends that have proceeded and reflect. I'm especially thankful for the Susky River Run cancellation. The group had the foresight to say, hey, the weather is just not going to work out, and even though many dollars, many hours of planning, many people that were planning on being in the race, you know, were disappointed, but they did the right thing. At 8:00 AM, there was the biggest deluge we've had in a while. So, I thank everyone involved, DPW, Chief, and your team for setting up those things and knowing that it was, it was, it wasn't sure what was going to happen, but, you know, we, I would say, as a city, did the right thing as well. And I just want to welcome back the River Run Race next year, because I know they will come back, and I look forward to participating in the event next year as well. I want to say thank you to the 60th Annual Art Show. Thanks for keeping it going. Thanks for keeping the spirit of art alive in our city and expanding it from Tidings Park all the way over to Concord Point and making it connect. It was really awesome to just go out there and see our local artists that have become a part of the fabric of the vendors. It's not just people coming from out of town wanting to sell their wares. It's our community, and it's our members that are feeling comfortable and confident to try out their art and share it with our community. And so, thank you, ladies, that put the show on, and we look forward to the 61st year, next year. I especially liked attending, because I got to meet Lindsay and see her book. I got to see her, and when she was reading it, I pulled up right when she said water, and W is for water, and we were right there on the bay, and it was just, it was appropriate timing. And I know that she's going to be back again in town, sharing her book with our community, with the children, this coming Saturday at the Autumn Fest at the Maritime Museum and at the grounds of the Lighthouse Keeper. There's going to be mums for sale. There'll be Ms. Lindsay Pope and her artist, John Keaton. They'll be there to promote the book. Lindsay will be reading aloud. Children can come and go to the Scarecrow Run, and also, there's a pumpkin contest. So, it'll be fun, and it'll be festive and kind of be a kickoff for our week, our autumn festivals that are coming our way. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for just the opportunity to sit here and be a part of our community. Thank you very much, everybody that put in tonight to share all the experiences that you have with our city and being involved actively as a group, as admin, and representing the folks that serve our city. Thank you, and back to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Council Mayor Shenegas. Council President.
Mr. Mayor. Council, oh, I'm going to fill the buzzer a little bit till Councilman Robertson gets back. No, I don't want to do that. So, he did have to step out, but he won't be back. He was hoping to be back by now. So, that's what I'm doing on my phone, is in his stead. I will mention that October 7th, American Legion will be holding an Italian festival. 20 bucks, it's open to the public, $10 for dessert, they have all kinds of stuff, and he's right here, and I'm going to take a pause and yield backhand to him, allow his comments, and then I'll come back.
Finish your comments if you want.
I'll finish my comments, okay. So, I have a motion at the end. So, again, come to the American Legion, make sure you get some taste of Italy, and I'll let him talk about the Veterans Day stuff coming up. October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and I've been with Social Security Disability for over 20 years. I've seen plenty of breast cancer cases. My wife is a breast cancer survivor, but also males can get breast cancer. It's, it is rare, but it does happen. I've seen several cases of that, so, everybody, you know, be careful, check yourself, and stay up to tune on that. The Halloween decorations are up downtown. Thank you to Mr. Jimmy Burrell from the city. He said Moore's coming, and they will be part of some games and contests. Sounds like fun. Again, Mr. Boger, Councilman Boger, Think Big is breaking ground. They're, they're just going gangbusters, putting stuff in, and I'm so excited about, you know, having Fiber Optic finally in Havertown Grace with decent internet speeds. Can't wait for them to get everything taken care of. This Friday is the Susquehanna Lodge Number 130 Golf Tournament at Furnace Bay. We do have plenty of openings for teams. It's, I think it's like 100 bucks for, per person, teams of four, and it all benefits the Masonic charities of Havertown Grace. We give away scholarships and stuff like that, and, but that's at Furnace Bay. So, if you have any questions about that, reach out to me, or you can go on, online and find the information there. I also went to the art show. I did not get to enjoy it, though, because I was working with the Boy Scouts, and we, man, we sold so much. We did exceptionally well. Usually, we host the, sorry, we work at the Apple Festival, but the Apple Festival is no more, unfortunately. So, one of our, our new fundraiser now is going to be the art show, and we did an exceptional job selling stuff. Special thank you to Gordon Eisner for organizing all that, and, you know, hopefully this will help us, you know, as scouts to continue to do what we do and keep going camping and raise fine young men in my troop. And my daughter did just join Troop 967, which is the other troop in Havertown Grace. So, it gives us an opportunity to help the kids. Let me see here. I'm super excited to announce for all the metalheads out there that Just Sabbath, the Black Sabbath cover band, is coming to Havertown Grace. I guess I complained enough, and they did agree to come. In April, they'll be at State Theater on April 13th. So, April 13th, you know where you'll find me and my son. We're going to go there and see that. And I'll end with saying that this Saturday, this past Sa, sorry, this past Friday, Havertown Grace beat Perryville in probably one of, one of the best football games I've ever had the pleasure of watching. It was just amazing. It was back and forth, they both scored on the opening drives, and it literally came down to the last play. Perryville had the ball, and they're marching down the field, trying to get within kicking distance, and they threw the ball a couple of times. Havertown Grace batted it down, backed them up a little bit, they got nowhere near kicking distance, so they had to throw the ball on fourth down. We knocked it down, turnover on downs, we knelt out the game, we won 30 to 28, and it was exceptional. So, that's the Susquehanna Bowl. We won that. We won the Route 40 Bowl against Aberdeen. So, Havertown Grace and, sorry, Aberdeen and Perryville have nothing on us. So, Warrior Proud, Grace on Top. That's what Mr. Glenn would say.
Absolutely.
And I'll yield, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Council President, and we'll finish off with Councilman Robertson. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. I yield my time. All right.
Okay. All right, thank you. Item number 19, Council President.
Mr. Mayor, Council, oh, give me a moment. Under the Open Meetings Act, General Provisions, Article 3-305, I make a motion to go into closed session upon adjournment of the open session on Monday, October 2nd, 2023, to consider the following matter. One, to consult with council to obtain legal advice. This meeting will be closed under General Provisions, Article Section 3-305, subsection B, subsection 7, to consult with council to obtain legal advice. The reason for the closing of the meeting is consultations with the city attorney regarding advice are entitled, entitled to confidentiality under the attorney-client privilege. The city council will not resume open session after the closed session, and votes, if any, will be recorded in public at the council meeting on October 16th, 2023. And that is my motion. Mr. Mayor.
Council, I have a motion by the Council President. Do I have a second?
So moved.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Boger. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion to go into closed session is approved, 6-0 in affirmative, after adjournment. Item number 20 is adjourned. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Jones, second by the Council President. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion to adjourn the October 2nd, 2023 council meeting, carries 6-0 in affirmative. The time is now 9:21. Thank you very much, everybody. We'll see you back here on October 16th. Have a good evening.